Thank you all for joining us. Before we begin, I just want to mention a few notes about our meeting format. We're being, our meeting is being held in person as well as online. The commissioners, planning department, and staff are attending at Wheat Ridge City Hall and by way of the Zoom platform and on the Wheat Ridge City Zoom account. In addition to broadcasting over Zoom, we are also broadcasting this meeting on Channel Eight and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. If you are interested in speaking at tonight's meeting online, please raise your hand on Zoom or on the dial-in telephone call. A Zoom meeting link and dial-in information can be found on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. When it's time for public comment, and we have three public comment opportunities today, those who wish to comment on the Zoom connection, use your Raise Your Hand button. If you are dialing in, please press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute your phone. If you do plan to speak online tonight, please keep the background noise to a minimum. Just mute yourself when you are not speaking. And if you plan not to speak and just want to view the meeting tonight, we encourage you to just watch the meeting live on Channel Eight or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. So, we appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting. We hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order of the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for June 2, 2022. Steve, can we begin by getting a roll call of members, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Shelkey.
Here.
Mr. DiTulio.
Here.
Commissioner Larson is not present. Chair Antal.
Here.
Ms. Disney.
Here.
Stern, are you here?
Here.
Leo.
Here.
And Kearns is, he's absent. Madam Chair, there are six members of the commission present. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you, Steve. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So, please stand and join me in the pledge. "A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the Order of the Agenda for June 2.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Nope? Okay, let's call for a vote.
Madam Chair, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Approval of the Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 19, 2022 Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Let's call for a vote. Oh, I meant to abstain. Did it record my...
Madam Chair, the motion has passed by a vote of six in favor and none opposed and none abstained.
Will you please note that I need to abstain? Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is the Public Forum. We'll now open the General Interest Public Forum segment of our agenda. This is time for any person to speak on any item that is not related to the items on the agenda. And if you plan to speak on a specific agenda item, please wait until that item is brought up. All speakers are asked to limit their time to three minutes. When you do speak, please state your name, spell your last name, and share your address. And just a reminder, you cannot donate your three minutes of time if you do not require the full time. Lauren, is there anyone signed up to speak in the general interest forum?
No one has signed up in person. We do have one person joining us on the Zoom, but there's not a hand raised. If you are on the Zoom and would like to speak on something not on the agenda, please use the raise hand feature now. No hands.
Okay, well, with that, I'll go ahead and close the public interest forum. All right, let's move to our public hearings for tonight. Our first item tonight is case number WZ-2205, which is an application filed by Anthony Sherman for approval of a zone change from Commercial One to mixed-use commercial interstate on a property located at 10-101 West I-70 Frontage Road North. I'd again like to welcome members of the public to our hearing. It's important that this hearing be conducted in a dignified and signal civil manner. And we start all our public hearings with a presentation from staff and, in some cases, a presentation from the applicant. After the presentations, commissioners will ask questions of staff and the applicant. After that, we will invite members of the public to raise their hand and comment during the citizens' forum. We typically administer an oath for anyone participating in the public hearing, staff, applicants, and the public. In this hybrid meeting format, we are administering the oath in a different way. If you comment during a public hearing tonight by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. With that said, could we have the staff presentation, please?
Good evening. My name is Alena Livas Loetta, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ-2205, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Commercial One to mixed-use commercial interstate at 10101 West I-70 Frontage Road North. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, the Planning Commission The subject property is outlined here in red in the middle of the screen. The property is located on the north side of I-70 on the I-70 Frontage Road. The area is primarily commercial in nature, with retail uses to the east and some light industrial uses to the north and west. The property is a large site measuring just over five acres in size, and it contains a five-story motel building built in 1975. This is a zoning map of the area. The property is currently zoned C1 and is outlined in red. More C1 properties exist to the east that include Hopper, Sports Grill, and Anapa Auto Parts. Immediately north of the site is a planned industrial development, including a plumbing supply company. To the west is more industrial and agricultural one zoning. Immediately to the west is a used car dealer. The unshaded area at the top of the image is the city of Arvada and the shopping center with the Target. This is a view of the subject property looking north from the I-70 Frontage Road. It is a 91,571-square-foot motel with parking. The applicant is under contract to purchase the property, and the purpose of the zone change is to enable reinvestment by allowing a wider range of uses, encouraging a better utilization of land, and ensuring high-quality urban design. Because the motel is aging, the applicant is contemplating redevelopment of the site, including potential multifamily and commercial uses. The current C1 zoning is reflective of longstanding commercial uses in the city. The C1 Zone District allows a wide range of commercial land uses, which include office, general business, and retail sales and service establishments. By contrast, the MUC Interstate zoning allows residential uses, commercial uses, or a mix of the two, and the permitted retail uses are greater in number. The MUC Interstate designation would allow more flexibility for revitalization of the site and will provide standards for a future redevelopment. The proposed MUC Interstate zoning allows residential uses, commercial uses, or a mix of the two. The MUC Interstate District is complementary to the context of the corridor and the surrounding zoning and land uses, and provides a wider range of allowed retail uses than the existing C1 zoning. This table summarizes the current and proposed zoning's development standards. Most of the proposed zoning development standards would apply if the property redeveloped in the future. Most notable differences between the two zone districts include building height, setback requirements, and lot coverage. The design standards in MUC Interstate are strict and include architectural standards, open space requirements, setbacks, and parking requirements. I would like to point out that the maximum heights listed in the packet for MUC Interstate are in error, and the slide accurately lists them. I would also like to note that the maximum height in MUC Interstate is taller than C1, in part because the property is located in the area that voters exempted in 2008 from the charter's height and density limitations. That means a single-use building can be up to six stories or 90 feet, and a building that is vertically mixed-use, oh, I'm so sorry, I misspoke. No, I think that's right. Excuse me. Mixed use can be up to eight stories or 118 feet. For point of reference, the existing motel that is there is five stories. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on March 30, 2022, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. One person attended the meeting and did not have any concerns. Because Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. Staff received no comments from members of the public prior to this hearing. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which include consistency with the comprehensive plan and other applicable plans. Staff believes that the proposed MUC Interstate zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city's comp plan and the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Area Plan. The property is identified as mixed-use commercial within the structure plan, a designation used for existing commercial areas, and which calls for long-term infill and reinvestment. The I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Area Plan calls for many of the same policies and goals of the city's comp plan, including high-quality architecture and design, the incorporation of new and existing uses into a mixed-use format, and the stabilization of existing neighborhoods. The mixed-use commercial interstate zoning designation is appropriate for the subject property, allowing the existing land to be conforming and enabling the possibility of future redevelopment, which aligns with the city's adopted goals and policies. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns of the area, the MUC Interstate Zone District in this area is more appropriate than C1 in terms of allowed uses for the property. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds a zone change to MUC Interstate is supported by the city's comprehensive plan and the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Area Plan, specifically the vision for high-quality architecture and design, the stabilization of existing neighborhoods, and reinvestment in aging commercial properties. This zone change request supports the comprehensive plan by enabling investment in the property and by aligning the zoning with the city's mixed-use goals for this corridor. Planning Commission will recommend a decision to city council, who will also review the zone change request. If city council approves the request, then the zone change is approved. That concludes my presentation. The applicant will not be presenting a formal presentation, but will be available for any questions, along with staff as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alena, for that very thorough presentation. I will entertain questions from the commissioners at this point, and we'll start with you, Commissioner Leo. Any questions?
I have one that I'm bringing. Can you come back to me?
Sure, sure. Okay, Commissioner Disney.
No questions.
Commissioner DiTulio. Commissioner Shelkey.
No questions.
Okay, I do have a question if you need a moment more to think, but Commissioner Stern?
You go.
I just wanted to clarify a couple things. I wasn't quite sure what the end result on the height difference was with the proposed zoning. Could you clarify that, please, Alena?
Yeah, so, the height for the, oh, can you hear me better? Okay. The height for the proposed zoning is a maximum of 118 feet, and that's for a mixed-use, vertically-mixed-use building, and a maximum of 90 feet for a single-use building.
Okay, so the staff table is incorrect. Okay.
Yeah, on the packet, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then, you mentioned parking requirements. I didn't see anything about parking requirements. How does that work in MUC if they decide to do some sort of apartment complex as well as a commercial? Like, what table do they use, or what's their ratio?
So, all of the mixed-use districts follow the same ratio, so the same in MUN versus MUC, MUC Interstate. They are slightly reduced compared to C1. So, if it were to be a residential complex, it's a minimum of one space per unit and a maximum of two and a half.
Okay, okay. And then, let's see. The last question, just out of curiosity, because this is so close to city of Arvada, and I know that area has been a big area of interest. Do you, is there a protocol where you at least, like, alert people, you know, like, do you guys do circulate plans or just make people aware? Like, how does that work with the Arvada?
During the referral period, we did send the referral out to city of Arvada. We didn't get a response from them, but similarly, the applicant will have to go through a site plan and a potential plat. So, for those, we would send it out on referral again, and we'd probably send it just because of the proximity.
Okay, and it's usually more at that stage where, if they are interested in commenting, you're more likely to get feedback, or?
Yeah, I mean, we have a collaborative relationship, especially in this northern area where our boundary is unusual. So, we collaborate, I would say significantly more on transportation improvements that might be necessitated by development, but we, sort of, both ways, we don't comment on their site planning, because it's their zoning that would regulate it, and they don't tend to comment on the site planning. It's more the off-site impacts that we definitely collaborate on. So, at that point, when we know what the use is, and likely would have a trip generation letter, we'd work with them if there's anything that needs to get jointly updated, say, on Miller or one of those shared streets.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Commissioner Stern?
Thank you for reminding me some time. My question is about the build-to area. It just made me curious if, what the primary frontage for this parcel would be, and is that kind of where a mixed-use building would be expected to address?
Yeah, so, the code does not prescribe which has to be primary. You know, we, it is an iterative process. On a site like this that is fully surrounded by streets, you know, we, it's a gut check, like, don't use the smallest frontage and call that the primary when there's so obviously one that feels more primary, but it does not say which one has to be. So, it's, it'll be iterative during the site planning process.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners? Okay, I will now open the hearing for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up to speak or on Zoom?
No one has signed up. We still have one attendee in Zoom. If you'd like to speak on this topic and you're on the Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. No hands raised.
All right, well, with that, I will go ahead and close the citizens' forum. Okay, before we entertain any motions, are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Is there going to be any comments from the applicant, or did he decide not to speak?
Right, no presentation from the applicant tonight.
Okay, great. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion on this case.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-2205. I request for approval of a zone change from Commercial One, C1, to mixed-use commercial interstate, MUC Interstate, for property located at 10-101 I-70 Frontage Road for the following reasons. One, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Two, utility infrastructure adequately services the property. Three, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. Four, the zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. And five, the criteria used to evaluate a zone change supports the request.
Can I get a second?
Second? Go ahead.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, then, let's vote.
Madam Chair, the motion has passed six to nothing unanimously.
Great, thank you. All right, our next case this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
We don't have slides for this next one, so we're just going to shuffle.
All right, great. Our next case is case number ZOA-22-03, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of accessory dwelling units and making conforming amendments therewith. Is there a staff presentation this evening, or it sounds like maybe a conversation?
Presentation, I would like to introduce Scott Cutler. I think you know him, but he has been managing this process for many months and many conversations with city council. So, they got really in the weeds on this, and were very explicit about their policy direction, and I'll let Scott share that update with you.
Yeah, I'll make a presentation from the table tonight. I don't have any slides. I do have the packet staff report that I gave you with an image that shows examples of what accessory dwelling units are. And before I get into the history with city council, I do want to just define what an accessory dwelling unit is, and that is a small, independent residential dwelling unit, which is located on the same property as a single-unit or single-family home. And they can be either converted portions of existing homes, as you can see on the top two images, as an addition or a basement or something like that, and those are typically called attached accessory dwelling units. Or they can be newer, converted, standalone accessory structures, which are called detached ADUs, and those graphics were provided by the city and county of Denver. At its study session in November 2021, so I guess not quite a year ago now, six months ago, city council did give staff specific policy direction and made a consensus for us to begin drafting an ordinance, which would allow accessory dwelling units across the city of Wheat Ridge. And in April, so a couple months ago, we returned to city council at a study session to present an ordinance framework and received final consensus to move forward with an ordinance as represented within this staff report and the attached ordinance that I provided. And the content of the proposed ordinance is based on the ordinance framework presented to council, as well as additional policy direction given at that meeting. So now, backing up a little bit, currently, the city of Wheat Ridge does not permit or define accessory dwelling units in the code. We do have a definition for dwelling unit, which is a building designed for occupancy as complete and independent living quarters, and that also includes having its own entrance and own sleeping and kitchen facilities. Currently, we do have a prohibition on dwelling units within accessory structures in the code, and then where multiple units are permitted by the virtue of the zoning. So, for example, R3 allows duplexes or townhomes. Those all have to be attached, and they also have to all be primary units, and that means they can be sold and occupied separately. So, we just don't have a framework in our code right now for allowing accessory dwelling units in the city. And we are actually quite behind not only this metro area, or the state, and nationwide in allowing and regulating accessory dwelling units. So, it's been a long time coming. Staff's been making recommendations. We actually went to council in 2015 and 2016 about this, and it was tabled for some time. So, it's back in the limelight, and the public process has been pretty extensive since 2015. Since that initial conversation was tabled, we have gone through the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, which was completed in July 2019, and acknowledged extensive public support of ADUs, but at that time recommended prioritizing other projects over ADUs until 2021. And we have a lot of data We have a lot of data from resident surveys over the past few years that show at least two-thirds of residents support or strongly support allowing and regulating ADUs. And then, more recently, with the Let's Talk Resident Engagement Programs, we've noted largely support of accessory dwelling units within the city. Some neighborhoods do feel more strongly than others, but overall, there is pretty broad support for accessory dwelling units. So, at this point, city council has asked us to move forward with an ordinance based on that sustained public support. The ordinance that you're looking at would, is based, like I said, on the consensus of city council. So, it is a little bit unique in that council has given us pretty strong direction on this ordinance. And although staff has made some recommendations based on both national best practice and also common practice of local communities, city council's direction has been pretty firm on some topics. So, I'll quickly go over the proposed regulations, and then we can really get into the weeds of the ordinance and with, obviously, the question and answer. So, we are proposing to allow accessory dwelling units to be permitted in all residential, agricultural, new-plan developments and the MUNs-owned districts, specifically as an accessory used to a single-unit home. So, if you own a single-unit home, you can build an accessory dwelling unit or convert part of your home into an accessory dwelling unit. Both detached and attached would be allowed. They would be subject to an administrative review through review of a building permit application through the city. There's not going to be any sort of additional minimum lot size for accessory dwelling units. We already have a lot of those requirements in our code for existing building coverage setback requirements, which would already limit the size and location. And council and staff felt that having an additional minimum lot size wouldn't make any sense. There will be, and this is a pretty substantial part of the ordinance, the requirement for an owner occupancy requirement. And that means that either the main house or the accessory dwelling unit must be occupied by the property owner. And that also means that the accessory dwelling unit cannot be sold separately from the primary dwelling unit. This is enforced through a deed restriction, which is signed and recorded throughout the process, although there will be some exceptions made for properties which currently exist as rental properties to allow those folks to get into compliance or grandfathering. The size restrictions, like some peer communities, council did decide to go with some size restrictions, not to exceed 50% of the gross floor area of the primary building or 1,000 square feet, whichever is more restrictive. And the reason for that is because accessory dwelling units are meant to be accessories. So, we don't want larger additions or structures being built than the main house. There is an exception for that rule for ADUs in a basement, because if you have a 2,000-square-foot footprint, that means you have a 2,000-square-foot basement. It wouldn't make sense to artificially limit that. For height, we're proposing a 25-foot height limit for detached ADUs and applying bulk plane to that as well. And then, for attached ADUs, the height requirements for a primary structure would apply because it's essentially in addition to that structure. You can only have one ADU per lot. We do know that there are some properties with multiple ADUs and that there are some provisions in the code which will allow non-conforming properties to get into compliance. No additional off-street parking requirement beyond what is currently required is being proposed. And that's partially due to the fact that Wheat Ridge already has some of the highest parking requirements in the metro area. And so, requiring even more parking just wouldn't really make a lot of sense compared to what other peer communities are doing. And I finally got into a really big component of the ordinance, which is the non-conforming in existing ADUs portion. City council really felt that, and is aware of, a lot of properties that have existing dwelling units on them that could be classified as accessory dwelling units. Some of these may be legally non-conforming in that the city has recognized those as dwelling units or through the permit process, but because we don't allow ADUs, they're not officially ADUs. And then, there are some that we're calling unsanctioned, which essentially is, we're not aware of them, and work may have been done to illegally build or convert these structures into accessory dwelling units. So, there is a proposed grace period to allow folks to come forward and get those registered essentially as ADUs and also go through the building permit process without fear of penalty. And that has really been a high priority for city council. And so, a lot of what's included in the code is at the direction of council. Almost there. A few more components of the ordinance. We already allow short-term rentals in the city of Wheat Ridge. And the way that that ordinance is written would allow a accessory dwelling unit to be a short-term rental, provided that the host continuously resides on the same property. So, there's already the owner occupancy requirement. And that means if you live in the main house, you can rent out your accessory dwelling unit as a short-term rental because you already have to live there. It wouldn't allow a property to have no owner on site and both units being rented. It's not changing our approach for short-term rentals, but the code does add that additional clarity now that we will hopefully permit accessory dwelling units. Couple more things. It will add new definitions for ADUs, including detached and attached. And then, we're also modifying existing definitions for single-family, duplex, and multifamily. We do have multiple definitions across our code right now. And this ordinance, as part of the conforming amendments, will align all of the definitions. So, we have a single definition for each housing type across the code. And that is that last bullet point on the Additional Components page, the replacement of housing terms. So, we also have multiple ways to refer to what we often call single-family or single-unit homes. And so, we're proposing to just streamline the code to align with best practice, which is calling everything single-unit or single-detached, duplex, or multi-unit, as opposed to using the term "family" in the ordinance. So, to summarize everything, the content of the ordinance is based a lot on the consensus provided from city council and is intended to permit ADUs in residential areas citywide, provide flexibility for homeowners in terms of design and location. And they're really one component of what's called the missing middle, which helps increase housing options in Wheat Ridge. Most peer communities already allow ADUs, and nationwide, the American Planning Association and the American Association of Retired Persons, the AARP, strongly advocate for ADUs because of their role in broadening housing options. So, happy to take questions. Thank you.
Great, let me go ahead and poll the commissioners. Commissioner Shelkey, any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, it doesn't have to be a short-term rental, right? It could be a long-term rental?
Correct, and likely most will end up being long-term rentals.
Okay. So, on the non-conforming in existing, I notice that the language is, "But building code requirements may apply." Why is it "may apply"?
There are some examples where we've already considered it to be legally non-conforming, which means that the city has recognized that dwelling in the past. And so, just like a house built in the 1920s, those don't have to comply with current building codes. Same thing would happen there. But there are instances where, especially with these unsanctioned dwelling units, where someone has done work without permits. In that case, the city often would require upgrades to make it come into compliance, especially with life safety issues. So, that's when the building code would apply, and they would have to obtain building permits to do remodel, to bring it up into compliance. Usually, that's life safety, electrical, the other two big ones.
But there's still some wiggle room in there.
There is, and that would be at, a bit at the discretion. We're still working out a lot of that, though, with the Building Department.
Sorry, Commissioner DiGiulio, any questions?
Just a couple of comments. I know that the city's been beating this dead horse since, they said, 2015. And I think that you've made it clear that the suggestions in here, council has directed these changes and these conditions. So, I don't see why we would try to, you know, change this now and recommend other things to council. But the question I had was, if it's a non-conforming use or it's being grandfathered in, and it's a property that has an ADU and doesn't have a owner-occupied unit, will you require that the owner-occupied unit be existing to get their permit or their license to have an ADU? Or I know there's a few in the city of Wheat Ridge where they're both are rentals right now. What would happen with that situation?
In that specific example where both properties are current, or both units are currently being rented, there was an amendment made at the last study session to actually allow those to continue because a lot of people have essentially invested and made arrangements to not live at that site. For new conversions or conversions where one is already owner-occupied, that's when they would be required to sign that deed restriction. And actually, everyone is going to be required to sign the deed restriction. The deed restriction would kick in if one of those dual rental properties ever became owner-occupied or sold. So, there are ways to eventually get a lot of these properties that are not owner-occupied upon sale or owner occupancy of the property to become owner-occupied.
Thanks. I support all of the recommendations, and thanks for the work.
Great. Commissioner Disney?
I've got a couple of questions. How will the, let's say, I just decide I want to build an ADU, but I'm not going to pull any permits because I'm sneaky. How is the city going to prevent that from happening? Is there a way to stop that?
We see that with a variety of different kinds of work. So, we treat it the same way as if you went and built a garage without permits or did an interior remodel. The scope of that construction would likely be significant enough that we would have some sense, or a neighbor would call us, and it results in a stop-work order and a double fee. So, that type of behavior, once this ordinance comes into play, would be treated like any sort of illegal work without a permit.
And I'm assuming that these ADUs will have, with the building permit, will have to tie into city plumbing. They can't just build one and not have plumbing and expect to use the plumbing in the primary building?
That's correct. They'll have to comply with all building codes. We did send a referral to utility agencies as well. In some cases, they'll be able to tie into the main house but have their own separate facilities. And in other cases, they may have to upgrade the tap. But yeah, they'll have to meet all building codes for that.
So, let's say I build an ADU, and I pull permits, and it's all kosher, and I sell my property. So, now, the people who buy this, they have to, we can't, I mean, they have to still occupy the primary residence, but the person renting can stay, or how would that work?
The deed restrictions are, have a term called "all successors in a sign", so it does transfer on. The ordinance would allow the owner of the property to live either in the ADU or the primary residence. They don't have to only live in the main house. They could live in. But yeah, that would be really an agreement between a tenant and landlord at that point. But yeah, the same owner occupancy requirement will happen unless, at some point, council changes their mind about that or is preempted by state or federal law.
Okay. And because the deed restriction is recorded, it will run with the land and would show up on title work. So, in terms of how do you communicate that to a future owner, it would be communicated through that title commitment.
And then, do we have a limit on how many short-term rentals can be in Wheat Ridge?
We do. Actually, Elena manages a lot of that for the Planning Division. It's based on the total number of dwelling units per council district. And I think it's about 40-ish per district. District 1 has, is quite close to reaching that limit. The other districts are not close at all. But yeah, we do have a cap and have been managing that through the licensing process.
Thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Stern, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Leo?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. One, where you say that the primary dwelling unit must be occupied by property owner. But then, you say there would be exceptions for those who are already renting a primary residence, and then they would also have a rental added to that property.
Are you looking at a specific section of the ordinance?
The owner occupancy requirement.
Is that on page three?
I'm sorry, oh, page GS3, yeah.
Yes, so the last and then some exceptions will be made for properties which currently exist as rental properties.
So, if someone, if someone owns, say, a duplex, they could add buildings on that duplex property. And then, they would, they'll be renting out three or four if there were two. I guess, hmm, I don't know how to explain it, but...
Commissioner Leo, let me just clarify one thing real quick as you articulate your question. So, ADUs will not be permitted on duplex properties. They're permitted exclusively on properties that have one single detached home, one single-family home.
Okay, so there's one home, but it's being rented. And then, you could also rent. So, that is an exception.
So, the exception is very, very limited, and it came up, as Scott mentioned, in the last study session. There are existing homes with existing ADUs that are currently being used both as rentals. And for that's what we think is a very small class of properties. They may continue that operation where the owner does not live in either unit, sort of unless and until the property is sold, where they move back in. So, we don't expect that that's a large number of these situations.
So, they could continue it, but what about if you are renting and you want to add a unit? And you're, and that primary residence is being rented, could you then still add a unit?
I guess at that time, if the primary residence is being rented and there's no other dwelling units on the property, in order to build and have the ADU get a permit, it would have to become owner, one of those would have to become owner-occupied.
Okay.
So, someone couldn't build a new ADU without that restriction in place.
Okay, so, but if it's existing, then, okay, then they would be permitted. The other question I have, I mean, I know you kind of brought it up, but this is supposed to be an accessory dwelling. Then it talks about a basement. People do that without, I mean, a lot of people, if they have a basement, they have a, people live there and they're paying them rent. It's kind of like renting a room, but you're renting, I mean, that is not an accessory dwelling. So, how do these two fit in?
That's correct, and I think that image shows a basement in it. There are often basements that are rented out separately, but they're still considered to be part of the main house. An accessory dwelling unit is a completely separate space, which means that there's fire separation, there's a separate address, there's a separate entrance. And so, it's more of its own unit than just someone renting out their basement. So, we know that there are a lot of people that rent out their walkout basements, but there's still a common staircase, you know, up to the main floor. There's maybe a separate entrance, but there's not a full kitchen. Or even if there is, it's still connected to the main house, and there's no fire separation either, no separate meter for the electrical. So, there's kind of these two classes. And what we're talking about with ADUs is someone has a basement that is a completely separate dwelling unit and not just renting out a portion of the house or a bedroom in the house.
But that would be it existing. I mean, no one would convert their basement and make it so it was a separate unit if they could rent it away. I mean, I don't know. That just doesn't...
I think they may. So, what we're seeing is, that does exist, right? So, in Wheat Ridge code, you can have three unrelated people living together. So, we know people rent different parts of the building, and they have more or less amenities and are more or less independent. Over the last 10 years in my time, we have had to deny or revise building permits who were trying to create a more self-sufficient basement for the rental. So, they could obtain higher rental income the more independent that unit is, right? If it doesn't have to walk through my family's kitchen to get down to their unit. So, we do expect that there will be some people who will desire to have that basement more fully independent. Like, if my mother-in-law is going to move in, I'm probably going to try to make that as independent as possible, and she'll have her own entrance. There will be some situations where that's not going to be possible. There will be some situations where that's not going to be possible because of the ceiling height or the inability to do fire ratings. So to have that still be occupiable space is completely fine, but it won't get a separate address. And we will no longer have to tell people, you need to either remove the stove or the washer dryer, which is what we've had to tell folks to date, so that it doesn't sort of look, walk, and talk like an ADU, because we haven't allowed them. So we've had people remove gas hooks up, hookups, remove exterior doors, provide entrances to the main unit so that it doesn't appear to be an ADU during this time period where we've not allowed them to be. So I think depending on people's current conditions of their home, their desire to use the ADU with either a family member or a stranger, will sort of, and the, and the ceiling heights and building code conditions will dictate whether or not it's a formal ADU or just an extension of living space at some level of amenity, with, without kitchen, with, without exterior entrance. So all of those things can exist. And I think frankly, the goal of this is to allow that wider range of possible configurations to exist legally.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
You're good.
It's, there's no lot, areas, lot area restriction? I mean, I know you've got setbacks and things like that, but the setbacks aren't between the two buildings if one isn't in the front edge part of the lot. So, I mean, it, and what if you have a very large lot? Are you allowed to have more than one?
To answer that question first, no. The maximum number of ADUs per lot is one regardless of the size. We do already have in our code lot size requirements. So for example, in R1C, a lot has to be 5,000 square feet, just to exist. And we know there are some that are smaller, but we didn't feel the need to have an additional arbitrary minimum lot size because so many lot sizes in Wheat Ridge, they vary so widely. It wouldn't make sense to have an additional requirement. The other, the other part of that is we also have a lot coverage requirement. So in R1C, for example, 40% of the lot can be covered by a building. And that's not changing. So they'll still have to play within that boundary in order to build a new ADU.
Okay. All right, I think, yeah, I think that clarifies my questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few based on everyone else's comments. I mean, it, it is an interesting concept. And now where do I start? Well, based on what she was saying, because I think, I know at least in my neighborhood, I have probably what is maybe considered an ADU. I mean, so right now, if someone had put a separate entrance, and they have a separate kitchen in their basement, is that considered a non-conforming ADU as opposed to, and it's a single-family home, as opposed to, we know it's a rental apartment, right? But that's non-conforming, and under this, they could apply and become an ADU?
So I think we'd consider it existing. And then it's up to staff to determine whether it's legally non-conforming, which means that we have, as a city, recognized it in some capacity as a dwelling unit. And that means we approved a permit 40 years ago, or 80 years ago in some cases, where a lot of properties have been built with carriage houses, for example. Or we determined that it is unsanctioned or illegally non-conforming, which means that someone without permits converted a part of the dwelling unit. And we have never recognized it as being its own separate. So it's, we know that it's existing, but it, when they come to the city, we have to make that determination. And then that allows the building department to assess at that time what may need to be required in terms of upgrades. For most of the legally non-conforming, we don't anticipate a large amount or really any building code implications. But for someone that didn't do the work with the permit, we have no way of knowing whether that work was done to code or safely or anything like that.
So, and I know that this allows for attached ADUs. So if I wanted to just build a door to my basement, put in gas lines and everything, that, that could be an ADU, and...
Potentially. So one of the things that you didn't have the benefit of, I'm realizing in the ordinance, is the definition of dwelling unit, which is how we decide, is it sort of this self-sufficient unit or not? And it's not in the ordinance because we're not changing it, but that's currently in the code, and it's what we've used up to now to determine, like, does it look too much like an ADU to be allowed? And so that definition of dwelling unit, a building or any portion of a building designed for occupancy as a complete and independent living quarters for one or more person having direct access from the outside of the building or through a common hall, having living, sleeping, kitchen, and sanitary facilities for the exclusive use of those occupants. So there may be habitable space, but it's not meeting this definition and taking sort of all those boxes of complete, independent, exterior access, kitchen, sleeping, bathing. All of those components would have to be there in order for it to be an ADU.
Okay.
So some cases that you've described will either rise to that level already based on existing conditions, or people will do the enhancements they need to make that a separate ADU. And some will just sort of continue to exist as they are today, which is additional living space with some amenities, but not fully a complete and independent dwelling unit.
Okay. So on the review process side, this is where I'm like, I wish I knew the code as well as you both. Like, so this would be an administrative review, but what's, is there a difference between, and I'm guessing there may not be too much, but let's say I want to add an attached, you know, I want to add a master bedroom with a separate, separate entrance. Is the review process different than the ADU, which will be an administrative review process? You know, like, do I get a shortcut if I call it an ADU versus your typical addition?
No, if anything, it's probably the opposite. Because there are, there is a higher barrier when you're creating something that is an independent dwelling. You have to have more separation between the units, for example. So if you're just building an addition, it's all contained within the same building.
But if I'm doing an attached ADU, I, I'm not...
All residential permits, whether it's a shed, a garage, a master, or an ADU, we quote a two to four a week turnaround on common. So we don't, there's no fast track for certain types of permits.
Right. And it's all administrative, so there's no public verification of these reviews. But we have, you know, I think we're probably at 1,500 permits this year just for things that have happened across the city. That could be a shed all the way up through a new apartment building.
Okay. And the last question I had, or clarification, was related to what Commissioner Schelke was saying, you know, in terms of, like, building codes may apply. I know that non-conformance is a big issue. It's also a very expensive issue. And if you follow the news, just looking at how Lewis, Louisville has handled their energy upgrades requirements. I'm wondering, you know, first, again, what you mean by that "may apply", and then if there's also, in addition to like a grace period, if you guys have ever looked at, oh, and I have two more questions. If you've ever looked at just kind of a percentage requirement for, you know, like, sometimes they give people not just a grace period, but as long as you, you know, you provide 20% of the electrical upgrades, you know, each year or something. I'm just curious, like, as incentives to, you know, life and safety, you know, upgrades?
We haven't looked at the percentage approach, but we are familiar tracking similarly in the news, sort of the burden. I will say that the, the specific intent of council's policy direction on this topic has been to allow as many ADUs as possible, whether they were existing legally or not. And to that end, we have worked with our colleagues in the building division. And, you know, a very similar situation would be when we get a new business that comes into an old building, which happens every day, we do a business license inspection. And we are not looking at the entirety of the bones of that building. We are looking at sort of the critical life safety components to allow the public to come to that business. And it'd be a similar approach with ADUs. Same thing happens if you put on a master suite and a building inspector comes to look at that. They are sort of not looking at other things. You have to have COO, you have to have smoke detectors. But we're working with our building division to strike that balance of, we are ultimately signing off on a certificate of occupancy to allow an ADU, and it will have to have some stipulations that say, we're not looking at everything here, but it has passed these basic life safety requirements. And depending on the age of the building or the condition, particularly for those that are clearly built illegally, it may be appropriate to require some electrical upgrades, egress upgrades. And it may be that it's the code at the time that it was originally built. It may be that it needs to be a current code. We are, we've been directed by council to be in a problem-solving mode, not in a punitive mode. And we want people to come forward because we want this kind of housing stock. So we're actively working. We met with them today, and we meet with building division sort of every week or two till we get to our August 1 date to try to be in that mode where we're not being overly burdensome, that we're not getting these solved.
Yeah, no, no, and that makes sense. Yeah, you don't want to like, you know, apply for one little thing and have them open the Pandora's box of, I'm sure my house might even have some of those things. And then, sorry, one last thing, which Commissioner Disney kind of alluded to. I'm wondering, Scott, if any of the research you've done, especially in, in fill communities like Wheat Ridge, when it gets down to like the infrastructure capacity, when you're basically doubling, or could potentially be doubling, the amount of water and sewage generation? Knowing as someone who's had to upgrade all of those things in my home, I'm curious, like, has there been any research? Like, what percentage of, if you look at the number of dwelling units, how many people build dwelling units? Does that start to strain the existing infrastructure, or mostly from a utility perspective, I think, is...
Yeah, I can start that conversation. I mean, we do send, we did send application, or the ordinance on referral, and we didn't actually get any comments like that. I know that there are occasionally, during the development process, things that come up where developers are required to make upgrades. Part of that is obviously covered by TAP fees, if there are new TAPS that are required. But personally, I know that residential, I guess, use of those is so small compared to commercial and industrial that, and not everyone's going to add an ADU either. I mean, theoretically, every single unit home could have an ADU, but in reality, that's just not the case.
TAP, TAP fees and capacity are based on fixture count usually. And the addition of a single toilet, sink, shower may not tip the scales in that regard. And unfortunately, these ordinances are not resulting in a huge amount. We were just reading an article from the American Planning Association today that said the town of Burlington, Vermont, far bigger than Wheat Ridge, gets one to eight per year. And the point of the article is like, why are people not building these if we're allowing them? We know that our owner occupancy requirement will be a hindrance to the proliferation of ADUs in the city. And, and that, that's okay. That was council's direction, I think, you know, baby steps on this topic, right? But if we, we also know that the city's going to densify, you know, just by virtue of the growth in the metro area. So whether it's ADUs or multi-unit structures, we don't have a concern about capacity at this point in time. You know, with a big project like the legislative rezoning of Wadsworth to MUC or the Lutheran campus, we work really closely with those districts to come up with a plan in concert with them so that we know where the downflow pinch points are in sewer water capacity issues. So we don't have that concern with ADUs. Unfortunately, the pattern has been that despite good code and sort of the invitation to build them, they don't, they will not be the magic solution to the affordability and housing issues. And Wheat Ridge is just sort of one little piece of the pie.
Okay. No, it's, it's a curious issue, but yeah, I'm not expecting like this proliferation of ADUs anywhere.
We have gotten a proliferation of inquiries, particularly through COVID, not surprisingly, adult children moving home, parents, aging parents being pulled from institutional care. The number of inquiries from, not from a rental standpoint, but from a family, intergenerational family standpoint, have skyrocketed for us in the last couple of years. So I hope it's a solution that's meeting the demand that we're hearing from when we get those calls.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Commissioner, Commissioner Schelke?
Yeah, I'm still on the non-conforming ADUs. So I have one in mind, and so they rent out the upstairs and they rent out the downstairs. And it has a separate entrance for the downstairs. But it's not conforming. It doesn't have egress windows. And I'm sure it doesn't have a lot of other things. So seems to me this would be a good opportunity to clean up things like that that make, that they would have, they're, if they're going to be an ADU, that they have to meet the code requirements.
Yes, just, and to some extent, they will have to. I think if council's policy intent was to clean up the many sort of older structures we have, then we'd probably be a little bit onerous, but that just hasn't been the intent so far. So the, the minimum things that would make sense to clean up, I think we would address. But it will, it will very much depend on sort of the fact pattern of each property. As we play this tape forward, if you have an existing living space, it will be the owner who submits to us sort of the documentation to prove this has been in existence since before the city existed. I got a permission from Jefferson County to convert this chicken, whatever it might be. So it'll be very case by case. And yeah, it's definitely the push-pull of what is it, what makes sense to, to clean up or, or fix, and, and what is meeting the legislative intent from council.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, we have not yet opened a public hearing for comment. Do, we do not have any members of the public present here, but is there anyone on Zoom?
We do still have one person on Zoom. If you would like to comment on accessory dwelling units, please hit the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. No hands are raised.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close the public forum. I guess at this point, I will entertain a motion unless there's, Commissioner DiTulio?
Is there a motion in order?
Yes.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of accessory dwelling units and making conforming amendments therewith.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Call for a vote.
Madam Chair, the motion is passed by a vote of five to one, with Commissioner Leo voting no.
Great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is new business. Lauren, is there any new business?
My only new business is a dates, update on dates. We will not be meeting on June 16th. I think I mentioned that last time. We do expect to have the July 7th meeting, so please hold that date for the time being.
Seven, or?
Seven.
Okay.
I did not prepare any project or development updates for today. Sorry.
Okay. Great. And I think there is a new item, another new business item. I don't, we don't really have a section called Commissioner Business, so would it be appropriate to address this here?
Yes, that's, that's appropriate.
Okay, great. So I'm not sure really how we do this. Do you, I just give the floor to Commissioner DiTulio, and he can make his proposal?
Yes, you can always invite any commissioner to have any new or old business.
Okay.
Thank you. I sent out an email earlier today, and it was based on the fact that, you know, we meet at 7 o'clock at night, and other groups in the city meet earlier. And, you know, sometimes we're getting out here at 8:30 or 9 o'clock at night. And so my recommendation was, I called staff, and they said that they were, really didn't care either way if we started earlier or later. It might benefit staff that they don't have to be here so late. But what I passed out was this email from staff about how we would make a change. If the board, the commission really agreed to change the time from 6:30, from 7 to 6:30 start, that we could actually do it tonight and make a motion to suspend bylaw rules, and then add it so that we would be meeting at 6:30 rather than at 7, to just help everybody get home a little sooner, especially if we get into some heavier projects and discussions. It might help to start a half hour sooner. The city council starts study sessions at 6:30, and then Lauren had some comments about other groups that meet earlier or later.
Yes, based on your question, I just did a little... Based on your question, I just did a little bit of homework. So in terms of other city boards, Cultural Commission meets at 6, the Urban Renewal Authority meets at 6, Parks and Rec meets at 6:30. As you mentioned, city council study sessions are at 6:30. In terms of other community planning commissions, they range from 3 PM in Denver to 7 PM with us. I'd say the majority of them are in the 6 to 6:30 window. It's been a, a habit and a tradition, but it's not required to be a 7 PM start. And as you saw in my email, the provision of other ways to participate through both Zoom and Wheat Ridge speaks. I think we're still fulfilling the intent of it being a public meeting at any time in the evening.
So there's a couple of ways, if the board, well, first of all, does anybody have any comments about the proposal, one way or the other, pro or con?
I do. The earlier meeting time personally would be much more difficult for me. I have very young kids at home, and my spouse really values having me there for those 30 minutes right before bedtime. I, I know every family has a different schedule, but that's, that's where I'm at.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to actually do a round robin from the commissioners to get a sense of kind of where people are at. Commissioner Leo, I know you've been on the commission for a while, so what are your thoughts about?
I actually liked the earlier time I was on the Urban Renewal. That was one of the things that I would change was the network to get, you know, to get done. It's something that we do, we've been very late, so. But I understand, I understand how it would be difficult for some people. I, I would.
Commissioner Disney?
I would prefer it, 6 or 6:30, even earlier.
Commissioner Shelkey?
I'm okay with 6 o'clock, 6:30, or 7. It doesn't really matter to me.
Okay. Yeah, for myself, I, I'm glad to hear you did some research. I know council meets at 7, even though their study sessions are 6:30. I first wondered about the consistency. You know, does the public expect, you know, Planning Commission is kind of next in line behind council? Do people expect meetings to be at a certain time? And does that, would that impact participation?
Is that a question for me? I don't, you know, I don't get that sense. I think we do a pretty good job of advertising the times, and frankly, folks have to adapt every Monday to one time or the other. So there's already a, a good sort of mixed bag in, in the times. All those other boards I mentioned are public boards where folks can attend as well, so.
Okay.
We would make sure we communicate any change very clearly for folks who have been in the habit for Planning Commission. But I don't, our, we talked, I talked to our director, and there's not a concern about you changing it. We'll just make sure we communicate it well, if that happens.
Okay, thank you. Personally, I'm kind of split. I agree we've had some late nights here where I tend not to eat early, and, and I'm here at 10:30, and it really impacts my, my sanity. But I do also get a little concerned, because I travel for work sometimes, you know, outside the metro area, and so it could be a little tricky. But I'm not necessarily opposed, if consensus is, to move it a half hour earlier. You know, I think 6:30 is maybe a good compromise. 6 would be very difficult for me personally with work.
Well...
6 is difficult to make a compromise, so.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, I believe in all I have to do.
Yeah.
Well, here's what I, here's what I propose. We have two commissioners out, and really, Commissioner Stern, you know, a half hour one way or the other. I don't know if that would impact your family. If you got home a half hour earlier, that'd be good too, maybe, right? But what I'd like to suggest is that the bylaws say you have to propose a rule at one meeting and then vote on it at the next. So otherwise, we could override it tonight, but I don't want to do that. So what I was thinking is, I, I would like to see a proposal brought forth for the next agenda, a motion that would say we would start at 6:30 to amend the bylaws. This way, we'll come to the next meeting. Hopefully, everybody's here, we could discuss it one more time, and then vote. Would that be, does that work for you as far as getting it on the agenda?
Yes, we can put that on the agenda.
So my, my proposal would be, we start at 6:30, and that would be on the next agenda as a motion, one way or the other. That's okay with everybody?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I do also want to respect that even though Commissioner Kearns and Commissioner Larson aren't here, they've been with the commission for several years with the understanding of that. And so giving them an opportunity to have a discussion about it rather than making a decision without, even though they're not here.
Right. So that's, that's why I'm trying to be fair.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I am.
I will add it to the agenda next time. You're welcome to talk to Commissioner Larson and Kearns. In the meantime, any of you, or talk amongst yourselves. I'll, I'll make sure it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
And so that'd be that July 7th meeting, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I do not have any other new or old business.
Okay, great. Well, any other comments from the commissioners before I call for adjournment? All right, well, with that, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Call for a vote. We are adjourned.